To begin our meeting of the city council for August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have another Kingswood Academy student who will be our mayor for a day. This is our second of our three young men who will be doing this. And tonight, Clerk Rigona will be swearing in Samuel Bergman. Samuel?
Please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Samuel Bergman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support thee.
Support thee.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And thee.
And thee.
Constitution of thee.
And the constitution of the.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Mayor for the day.
Mayor for the day.
According to.
According to.
The best of.
The best of.
My ability.
My ability.
Congratulations.
Ask her to take the roll.
Please call the roll.
Belzak?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Five present and two absent.
Have a quorum. Does anyone in the audience have anything they would like to share with the council that is either on the agenda or not?
We have a gentleman coming forward.
I can take this off, right? I'm Jim Bola, thirty-one oh nine Drover Lane. Before starting, I want to mention that I have to leave soon as this is over, so don't think I'm walking out on you. I'll give Brian my contact information if anybody is interested and needs to contact me. Let me start out by saying I have used the CART program. I'm using it now, and I've used it for as long as I can remember. When I spoke here about five years ago, I was fairly confident that the council was going to vote to get rid of the sticker problem, sticker program, and just go with the CART program, but we lost four to three. So here we are again. I'm disappointed with the latest RFP that Brian's put together in the sense that, again, it's presenting this option or giving the option for the sticker program, which I'm obviously very much against. I think we need to understand that those in favor of the sticker program are going to complain, whether regardless if the new sticker price is high or low, they're going to have the same complaints, they're going to give you, you know, a handful of people will give each one of yous a call. Tonight, I only want to touch on previously on some of the stated reasons why I think you should select the CART program. The majority of the litter on streets on garbage day comes from people using open recycling bins or trash cans where they're piling up the garbage. There are people in my neighborhood that use a can, have three, four bags on top of it, it's blown all over the street. I take walks somewhere virtually every day in my neighborhood, or in parks, or in forest preserves. Saw him there the other day. I see garbage that has been dumped. I also see what goes on at gas stations and outside our community businesses. Before retiring, I saw firsthand how people brought garbage to work. The only change I've seen in the last few years is the bags are getting smaller, and that's primarily at the gas stations. They've come up with the new lids that are much smaller, so people can't bring in full bags. But I see that at the Darien Park District over in, I'm in Farmingdale Village, I see the garbage there all the time. I see people routinely walk there in the morning dumping off their garbage. I could go on, but these arguments didn't win any, didn't win it last time, so I want to concentrate really on what the mayor has described as fairness. As background, Waste Management has provided the data from previous haulers showing that while there's been an uptick, uptick in the number of homeowners using the carts, there's also been a constant decline in the number of stickers. What I really found most unusual about that sticker count that they gave is in two thousand and twenty, it can, it also went down in two thousand and twenty. And when you look at most of the people, so many more people working from homes all day long, yet there's less stickers being used, how does anybody explain that? I mean, how does that possibly happen? That was what was going, has been going on with COVID for the last year and a half, stickers continue to decline. And since, I also want to mention that we have the same stickers for garbage as we have for yard waste, so you can't just look at that sticker count and think it's for trash. It's, it's a combination of trash and yard waste. And what I have noticed, in my subdivision anyway, and I would say you should go out on your garbage day and look in the neighborhood and see what's going on, but I, what I've seen is, is that the number in this, in this five, six-month period of summer months, there are as many stickers being used for yard waste as there are people that actually have garbage out with stickers. So let's, let's talk about, let's talk about fairness. The city of Darien, like many suburbs, decided long ago not to include trash or garbage pickup in the, in the real estate tax bill, and, and so the burden of the payment of collection has been transferred to the haulers, and obviously those costs are passed on to the consumer. Let's talk about human nature. Given the opportunity, would homeowners with children want to pay for school, for school taxes if, if they don't have kids in school? I don't know, they wouldn't want to do it. People that don't use the Darien Park District, would you want to, would you pay taxes if you had your opportunity not to pay taxes for the Darien Park District and you don't have kids, you don't use the Darien Park District, you wouldn't use it. You would just, you'd scratch it off the list. Like, obviously, I could go on for, there's, there's twenty items on the, on the tax bill that you would just avoid. So why is trash collection any different? CART program users and some legit sticker users are paying the freight for all the homeowners. When I walk the neighborhood, I see as many homeowners, as I mentioned, with, with recycling out, but no garbage. Somehow, the argument that's always brought up is we, we save our garbage. The same people that save their garbage, but have to get their recycling out every week. How do you explain that? They got to get their recycling out, but not the garbage. I won't take up too much more of your time, let me finish up here. Again, we're, we're, so the, I, in my estimate, I, you know, you guys can make your own estimate by going out and looking, I'd say twenty-five percent of the homeowners pay little and nothing for this service. Is that fair? At the same time, I don't mean to imply all sticker users, users are somehow cheating the system, and there are legitimate concerns, but in the CART, in the CART program, RFP that Brian has put together, he's addressed some of those concerns. People are complaining about, I can't, I can't handle this big gar, these big garbage cans. He's got a variety of garbage cans sizes in that RFP. Seniors will come up and tell you that, you know, they, they can't afford it, somehow we got four hundred thousand dollar homes, but they can't afford garbage. He's got a discount in there for seniors. So in my, my preference would be, don't even include, don't even include the sticker option in that RFP, because we're going to be, you're going to hear the same arguments all the time, you need to make your own decision. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Brian, did you want to say something? I thought you had.
No, I was just waving to Jim. We've talked a few times, I'm just waving goodbye, I know he's running out.
Okay.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August second, two thousand and twenty-one minutes?
Oh, Sam.
Alderman, Kenny.
Second by Alderman Shower. Second by Alderman Shower. That's what you said. You might want to ask if there's any questions.
Do any of the Alderman have any questions?
Can I have the roll?
Can I have the roll?
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Abstain.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstention, and two absent.
The minutes have been approved. Do any of the Alderman have any communications for the council?
Alderman Shower.
Alderman Shower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had a couple communications this week from Anna and Chuck Harry at thirteen oh nine Greenbrier and Lisa Cairo at seventy-nine twenty-one Pine Court. Real briefly, they were basically, the noise factor at the Q bar has been an issue, and as we had a discussion about it, basically, it's the bass that comes on through that reverberates through the house, and even tonight, they're hearing that the music's a little bit loud. I got a text message while I was sitting here. But they're also, so they're basically saying they're, you know, they don't really want to have the outside music, which I can understand. When I explained to them how the Mayor Marques has talked with Mr. Taft over at Q bar and saying that, and explained to them that the noise is going to be cut out come September, and basically, the outside concerts are coming down, they were very excited about that. That made them feel a lot better, as we like to say. Most importantly, they also, I mentioned about the fact that the discussions going on, and we have no idea what's going to happen, but Q bar is talking about having, you know, building an inside, you know, arena or inside place that's going to be sitting in the parking lot. Again, there's no details to it. Again, Mayor Marques mentioned at the last meeting, and they're all in favor of that. They, you know, have no issues with it if it's going to be enclosed. So, music's a little loud, yes, they don't want to see it, glad that it's going to be ending come September, basically. The one thing I do have to mention is that Anna and Chuck Harry did go on to say that the greatest thing about the city of Darien is, is that we have very, very responsible people from the elected officials all the way down to the people that work at the city level, and that if they ever had any questions in the last, you know, how many years they've been living there, it's always been taken care of. And they said, for the amount of money that they pay for taxes for the city of Darien, you get, don't get any better services than at the city of Darien. And they've compared a couple other cities, and so they just wanted to mention that. So thank you to everybody that works for the city, from them.
Anyone else? Alderman Kenny.
Alderman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did receive a communication from Michael Scheck. It's in the unincorporated portion of Downers Grove, want to know if Darien can somehow help with water fees, the trees in their area due to drought are dying because of water. And that's coupled with the fact that we just had tornadoes going through, took out a good portion of their trees already. So I have talked to Mayor Marques here this evening, just, you know, mentioned it to him. So that's all I have for communications tonight.
Alderman Vaughn.
Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one communication from XJ Herrera from seven thousand five Claritin Hills Road. On August tenth, around nine thirty PM, their dog was ran over by a car speeding past her house, and it was caught on the Ring camera. So I was woken up about nine thirty PM when this happened, and so I reached out to her, but I would just wanted to make mention of that, that Claritin Hills Road is still problematic, and I think we could, we could continue to look at Claritin Hills Road to make it safer for families that live on that road, so that's all I have, so, yeah.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I did get a communication from Drew Kelly, a resident of my ward, expressing some frustration with customer service issues with advanced disposal. And I know he did get some assistance from city staff in getting a hold of advanced disposal. I think there might also have been a bit, a mix-up with the phone number, but city staff did assist him in getting some resolution with, one of his bins had been taken because he had two, but I think that's been resolved, and, you know, I think he just wanted to let us know, you know, that customer service should be a factor as we assess the RFP process.
Okay, that takes us to the mayor's report. We have a proclamation tonight, National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month, the National Suicide Prevention and Action Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of the mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide, to help de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the tenth leading cause of death among adults, and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of ten and thirty-four in the United States. And whereas more than forty-eight thousand people died by suicide across the United States in two thousand and eighteen, with an average one hundred and thirty-two suicides completed daily, and whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of one hundred additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas the city of Darien publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement, and whereas global organizations like Hope for the Day and our local mental health partner, Life Stands Health, serve on the front lines of a war that many still refuse to discuss, as stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. And now therefore, I, Joseph A. Marques, Mayor of the city of Darien, do hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand and twenty-one, as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the city of Darien, and I encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. And that's signed the sixteenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-one. Also on our mayor's report tonight, we have a police pension actuarial report, and I'm going to have our treasurer, Mike Corr, introduce our actuary.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I've got the honor of presenting Jason Franken from Foster &amp; Foster, who's been doing the police actuarial report for about the last five or six years, I believe. It's a very important report, because this report is used to determine our annual contribution requirement for our police pension fund. I won't take any of the wind out of Mr. Franken's sails, I'll let him present the report. It's, it's very involved, as you can see, he'll present some of the highlights. I met with Mary Sullivan to go over it in a lot of individual detail. Again, I offer you the same thing, if after hearing his report, if you have questions that come to mind after, feel free to ask Mr. Franken tonight, but if you have any others, I'm happy to meet with any of you one-on-one also. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Franken.
Thank you. As Mike said, my name's Jason Franken, and I'm an actuary with Foster &amp; Foster, and I'm here tonight to discuss the May first, two thousand and twenty-one actuarial evaluation. The, if you have a copy of the report in front of you, I'm going to be, I'm starting on page five, or just a summary of the, the results. The contribution requirement for the year was, was basically flat. So if, if you recall, we fund this pension plan on a pay, level percentage of payroll approach, so this creates what's, what's often called the pension ramp. And so if, if everything went according to plan, we expected the contribution requirement to go up by about fifty-five thousand dollars this year. You'll see it went up only by about seventeen thousand dollars, so the, the experience was, was much better than what we were expected, what, what we were expecting. And this was driven almost entirely by the investment return. So for the period that end, for the one-year period that ended on April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one, the plan earned just over twenty-five percent. So that's, you know, significantly higher than our seven percent assumption. However, if you recall from prior years, you know, you take the good with the bad, we do smooth the investment returns over a five-year period. So while we earned twenty-five percent, which means that we had, you know, eighteen, we earned eighteen percent higher than what we were expecting, we only recognized twenty percent of that gain in, in the numbers this year. And we will get, you know, over the next four years, we will recognize the rest of those gains. Hopefully, the, the market, the market will continue to be strong, but as a result of that smoothing, only twenty percent of that was, that good news was recognized this year. So on page eight, you know, our unfunded liability did go up by a little bit. It went from twenty-two point four to twenty-two point seven million, but our funded ratio did go up from fifty-seven point six up to fifty-nine point two. Again, this reflects the smoothing. At the back of the report, we have what's the GASB information. This is the information that goes into the financial statements of, of the city, and those are based on different, different rules and methodology set forth by the governmental accounting standards board. In those numbers, we are not allowed to have any smoothing, and so when we do those calculations, we get to recognize the entire gain immediately in, in the GASB section, so what would appear in your financial statements, the funded ratio is actually reported at sixty-five percent, just over sixty-five percent, rather than the fifty-nine percent. And again, that's just because, you know, here, when we calculate the contribution based on the Illinois Pension Code, we are smoothing the investment gains on, on GASB, we get to recognize the entire gain, and so our funded ratio on a, on the GASB basis is much higher this year. Since there is no smoothing, that GASB funded ratio is going to be a lot more volatile from year to year, depending on what happens in the market. So it could be, you know, it's, it's six percent higher than we're showing here this year. If you have a bad year, it could be six percent less than what we're showing here. So again, that, that number is, is going to be more volatile, and you may ask, okay, what, what's the appropriate number? Well, I guess it depends on who you're talking to. If you're talking about the, you know, the cash that's going into the pension plan, the fifty-nine percent number is the correct number. If you're talking to your auditor about your financial statements, then that sixty-five percent number is correct. Like I said, it's just based on different rules that are used for, for different purposes. Flipping ahead a number of pages, just to show you a little bit more about the smoothing, on page twenty-six, you'll, you'll see there's a table in the middle of the, the page. In two thousand and twenty-one, you'll see that there's a five-point-three million-dollar gain there. That means we earned five-point-three million dollars more than what we were expecting, and that's really that difference between the twenty-five and a quarter percent return and the seven percent that we were assuming. We recognized twenty-five percent of that gain, we still have four-point-two million dollars of unrecognized gains that are going to help us. If we look at the three prior years, the first couple of years, there were small gains, and in two thousand and twenty, you know what, right when the pandemic hit, we did have a, you know, about a one-point-seven million-dollar loss, but we've recognized portions of those, and in total, we have about three-point-two million dollars of unrecognized investment gains that are going to help us in those future, in those next four years. So that's, you know, it's, it will provide us with some tailwinds going into next year. Even if, you know, we don't quite get our seven percent, as we recognize these investment gains, it will help increase our smooth return. You know, this, this year, our smooth return was nine-point-one percent. You know, we had a small loss last year, so anything, any sort of positive return, and we're going to exceed our seven percent again. So like I said, that will provide some tailwinds that will help lower your contribution requirement in the future and increase your funded ratio. So I've gone through quite a bit here, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for Jason?
So Jason, this year, we approved two, and again, you threw a lot of numbers out, my apologies if I missed this, I know we approved two million ninety-seven thousand for the police pension, what are you recommending for next year?
The.
Actual number?
Yeah, the, the actual number was back on page five, it was two million one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
You didn't mention.
Three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So it's not that much of a difference.
About, about a seventeen thousand dollar increase.
Great, okay, perfect, thank you, appreciate it. I wanted people at home to hear that, thanks.
Anyone else have a question for Jason? Michael, is there anything you want to add, or?
No, not at this point.
Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I had a couple items that I forgot to report under communications. I received a, a beautiful letter from Mayor Cunningham in the village of Woodridge. She writes, Dear Mayor Marques, on behalf of our entire grateful community, our Woodridge Villa, Village Board, the village of Woodridge, and myself, we want to thank all of you for your tremendous outpouring of health, kindness, and sacrifice that was shown to us on that fateful day of June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. When our community was hit by an EF3 tornado, along with Naperville and Darien, without any hesitation, your organization reached out to help us, whether it was by sending employees or lending heavy machinery, providing donations, or sending us a carrying notice report. All of these, all this means so much to our community, and there are truly not enough words to fully express our thanks. We cannot begin to tell you how much we appreciate all of you, and wanted to thank you for coming to our aid when we needed it the most. Please accept this letter of gratitude and thanks from all of us, our entire grateful community. Your kindness will be felt for, for generations to come without Wood, for the Woodridge community, and that's signed by Mayor Gina Cunningham, Mayor of Woodridge. And then she also sent a, a personal card to me that I received, and as you know, our Lions Club collected two truckloads full of goods plus six thousand dollars that we made available, as well as our Public Works guys were over there helping out in Woodridge, as well as Bruce Lake. So I want to thank Mayor Cunningham for this lovely letter that she wrote thanking us. It's nice to, to see that they're doing better in, in Woodridge.
Before I go onto your next one, it's fitting, I just received a message that they're going to have a fundraiser at Shanahan's on.
September twenty-fifth.
August twenty-eighth from six o'clock until ten, all proceeds going to the families that had tornadoes.
Right. I know this last weekend, we had our Darien Fest, and a lot of people had questions with regard to it. April Patelik, our CEO of the Chamber, writes, greetings, Mayor Marques, City Administrator Brian Vannan, Council Board members. On behalf of the Darien Chamber of Commerce, I wish to report the thirty-three, thirty-third Annual Darien Fest, held at the Darien Plaza Shopping Center, eighty-one oh nine South Cass, Thursday, August twelfth, and ended on Sunday, August fifteenth, was a huge success. Would be safe to say, a few thousand people passed through the event during that time, most being families with small children. Many longtime Darien Fest goers stopped by the chamber tent and commented about the venue change, but then would follow up with a compliment on the layout and the carnival. Many who have worked this event as a vendor or volunteer also liked that it did involve a lot of walking, as everything was in close proximity. As to those business and homeowners along the west side of Cass who appeared before the council expressing concerns, as far as I know, none of that occurred. I personally monitored the west side of Cass Avenue several times during the fest and did not observe anything out of the ordinary. At the close of the fest on Sunday night, I removed the no parking signs that the chamber had posted along Cass, and again, observed nothing out of the ordinary. Another plus to this year's fest was that it brought more exposure, food traffic, and customers to the area, businesses such as Sylvia's Bakery, El Chile, Darien Liquors, Uncle Ma's, Exotic Pet World, Rosati's Pizza, and of course, Q Bar. Please note that both Rosati's Pizza and El Chile had a constant flow of diners, and El Chile opened on Sunday when they were normally closed. In closing, this event could not have been pulled off without the assistance of many. I wish to personally thank the following, the city of Darien, the Darien Police Department, the Darien Women's Club, the Cancer Smashers, Bob Taft and his staff at Q Bar, and the Darien Chamber of Commerce, and the Board of Directors. And then, in addition to that. And then in addition to that, we did receive an email from the woman who owned the veterinary clinic across the street. And just to summarize what she said, despite her dire predictions, she says she was congratulating April and Chamber for a successfully run event. Nobody came across the street or caused any of the issues that they, that they felt might occur. And she says, congratulations on running a successful event. And then the third document I wanted to read was Chief Thomas's report on the event. This is a report from the, the police who monitored the situation. Over the weekend, overall, the weekend was successful. The amount of manpower for the police department was sufficient for the event. We had no issues with people parking where they were not supposed to park, i.e. the residential neighborhoods. There were, there was a resident on Park Crest who complained about the noise each day. They have it documented. In addition to Park Crest, we received complaints from four other locations. Per Sergeant Squares, the noise to the northeast and south of the fest was barely audible. From behind the buildings, areas to the west, the noise was audible, as that was the direction the stage was facing. So all in all, it appears that it had been, it was well received if you were over there. I had people who commented to me what they felt was especially nice was that all the food and drink activities took place within the Corral area. And when you were out there by the rides with your children, you weren't walking among people who were carrying a beer or carrying a drink, because all that was going on within the Corral. And people liked that. You actually separated that's, that activity from what was going in the Corral area. So congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce, to our police, to all the groups that were mentioned for what appears to have been a very successful Darien Fest. And now I'll turn it over to our new mayor. And we're right here. Yes, Clerk Verona. Do you ask her, does she have anything to report?
Do you have anything to report?
I have two items. The Darien City Offices will be closed on Monday, September the 6th, in observance of Labor Day. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 7th. Thank you.
Now, you ask Mr. Vanna.
Do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item under the city administrator's report, it's the garbage services renewal discussion. We've, the council has briefly talked about this over the last several meetings, including tonight, as we're preparing our bid specs for the renewal of our garbage contract, which is actually in 2022, but we're getting going now. Last week, our last meeting, when this was discussed, the council did ask that the RFP include carts, a full cart program, and also the current program we have, which is a sticker program. So that is, both of those are in there. When we get proposals back, we might see some differences in the proposals. We encourage contractors to report, or I'm sorry, to propose maybe different things outside of the proposal that they might think, that they think may help the city or improve the program. So again, that's here tonight for information, and we'll start that process really tomorrow.
Thank you, Brian. Department head of information and questions, I believe Chief Thomas has a report for us tonight.
I think it was June of 2019, that a number of the communities went together and purchased Hexagon, a new software company to track calls for service, crime, and the like. And it's been a little bit difficult trying to get the data out of there. So I've been successful the last couple of months, so put together a monthly report that you're probably very used to seeing, but haven't seen in quite some time. So just a couple of things right off, going back to school, so be safe around the schools. Two big things, one is drinking and after-school parties, weekend parties. The 2020 Illinois Youth Survey indicated that 44% of DuPage County seniors report alcohol use, and they get that from their parents with the parent's permission. Not a good idea. And then additional 29% of seniors report getting alcohol from a friend's parent with the friend's parent's permission. So a lot of drinking going on with either turning a blind's eye or allowing it to happen by a parent, so not a good thing to do. Please don't. Bus stops, a lot of people seem to have to relearn bus etiquette at the beginning of the year. When those lights are activated and the stop arm is out, it is illegal to pass the school bus from either direction, even if you are on private property. So give proper clearance to the school buses and let's keep the kids safe. Last June, obviously, we'd heard about the tornado and talked about that a little bit again. And then on August 9th, the tornado sirens were sounded, and people were inquiring why, when there was clear skies, that they would have a tornado warning sirens. And what happens is, DuPage is fairly rectangle, and when the warning came in from weather, it was, I don't know, rhombus shape, polygon, some type. And it's going somewhat through the middle of the county. So on a, to make sure that people were safe, they sounded the alarm for the entire county. So sometimes if the storm is to the south Will County, then just the southern portion of DuPage will get the siren, but it's, the siren will, will activate. Couple other things that people don't realize, the siren is for outdoor people. It's not expected to be heard on inside. So if you prefer to have good, safe messages, the television, your cell phone, weather radio, much better device than expecting to hear a siren inside the house or the den of the storm. So make sure you have that on. Also, some people reported hearing two sirens, thinking the second siren is an all-clear. There is no all-clear siren. So that second siren is because there's either a second cell, or a second storm, or some other event that caused that siren to be sounded again. So just be safe during the, during storms. We put out a crime alert. The thieves are getting a little bit more sophisticated and have some software and hardware to get into vehicles, and specifically Dodge Chargers, Challengers, Drangos, and Jeep Cherokees. And they're able to bypass the electrical system and start, start the car and steal the car. It's happened about seven times so far this year. So our recommendation, because it's a little bit more sophisticated, a lot of cars are stolen, because keys are left in it and they're left unlocked, and we have the whole mantra about locking up your stuff. And that's not going to work in this situation. So those vehicles, the Dodges and the Jeeps, probably need to be in your garage and secured there. And then a number of other items that we typically see. Alderman Vaughn, you talked about issues along Carradon Hills Road. On the bottom of page two, or about the middle of page two, on to the next page, we talked about citizen complaints. We've been logging those in a software that we call Frontline. And so at the last item on page two is the results of enforcement actions along Carradon Hills Road between 67th and Plainfield Road. And that goes for all the aldermen. When you advise us, or somebody in your ward advises us of a problem, we put that in frontline, and that's an easy place for you to find what we've been doing on those, at those locations, to get back with your constituents or the constituents themselves can look at the monthly report online. Besides the stolen cars, some good news in the crime report on page five talks about crime being down fairly well, 31% from last year, 35% five-year change, and more than half over a 10-year process. And then the next page gives a little graph to that effect. Accidents too, we have had some success. Last year, COVID year, had a lot less accidents, especially at the beginning of the year, March, April, June, because a lot less people were driving. It was a lot easier to get into work here because of the less traffic. But overall, when you look at the years prior, taking away the COVID year of 2020, we're having some good success in reducing accidents about 24% or 22%. And then the last pages, two pages, you'll see how officers are performing and really stepped up the game on enforcement. DUI arrests are up about 90%. So good things going on, and appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'll take care of what I can.
Alderman Kenny?
Hey, Chief, I'm looking at your, your citizen complaint chart at the bottom of page two, you looked to. Most of the numbers are pretty obvious, 12 observations, you know, citations. What's the, what's the minutes on detailing?
It's how long they stood there. So you had 12 observations, 337 minutes that they physically were parked there, either running radar, observing stop sign, whatever the complaint was, something to do with that complaint.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Vaughn?
I see there are six hit and runs. Have we found anyone, any?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. A lot of times hit and runs, jump over there. Ones in the parking lot are usually difficult, because it's either backing in or backing out, or whatever they're doing. So those are a little bit difficult. Some of those that are on the roadway are a little bit easier to solve. A lot of times, people are getting a license plate number and those type of things, because it's, somebody is there and saw it occurred. But I'd have to look that number up for you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Thomas? Mr. Combeck, any report?
No report. Warden Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Combeck? Dan will be giving, was it October, Dan? We usually give a rundown of our progress on all of our summer projects.
Correct.
And I think we said that we would wait until maybe the end of October to do that.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Corrin?
Mr. Corrin, give me your report.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 212208, in the amount of $827,740.45 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended August 12th of $262,718.13. The total be approved of $1,090,458.58.
Got anything?
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report?
Over there. Alderman Belzak?
Alderman Belzak.
And Alderwoman Sullivan. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Can I have the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I've got the summary for the second quarter police pension report performance. Now, it's the second calendar quarter, which includes April, May, and June, with some overlap, because April is the end of our fiscal year. So the April's already been considered in the report previously spoken of by Mr. Franken. But the quarter was very good performance-wise, with a 5.1% total return for that, for the quarter, made up of 7.7% from equities and 1.4% for the fixed income portion. So I'm fairly confident that May and June are at least positive going into the start of the current fiscal year. And the other thing that I believe is very positive, the board was able to nudge up the equity investment from 60% to 65%, which is the maximum allowed by the state. So hopefully, if equities keep performing, it'll make it a little bit easier to make our 7% bogey. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike.
Do any of the chairman have reports for the council? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The police committee meeting that was held, was supposed to be held for this evening, was canceled due to lack of agenda items. Our next police committee meeting will be held on Monday, September 20th, at 6:00 p.m. across the parking lot in the police training room, pending agenda items.
Alderwoman Sullivan?
Thank you. The Economic Development Committee will be meeting on Thursday, September 7th, 2nd, I'm sorry, Thursday, September 2nd, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. And the next Administrative Finance Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, September 7th, at 6:00 p.m. prior to city council in the upstairs conference room.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next municipal services meeting is scheduled for next Monday, August 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Does anyone in the audience have anything they would like to share with the council that is on the agenda?
Okay. That takes us to old business, there being none. It takes us to our consent agenda. There's two items under the consent agenda, consideration of a motion granting waiver of the raffle license bond requirement for Darien District 61, and consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Eco Clean Maintenance to provide janitorial services for the city of Darien beginning September 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion and a second? Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman Vaughn, and the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The consent agenda's been approved. Under new business, we have one item, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance granting a minor amendment to an approved planet unit development, 8511 Bailey Road, known as the Society of Mount Carmel, Society of the Little Flower, National Shrine, De Sain Theresa. Motion to approve, Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? Alderwoman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I did get a call from a resident, and I also had been looking at it myself, because I, I guess I was surprised I hadn't seen it come through planning and zoning. So I'm going to probably ask Jordan to explain why it's classified as a minor amendment versus major. But years and years ago, when I worked with Darien Neighbors Magazine, I had done a story about the history of Darien, and a lot of the original buildings. And at that time, I was under the impression that they were pursuing the Society of the Little Flower and the Carmelites' national historic status on, you know, we'll call it the White House. Obviously, that must not have happened if they're looking to make, you know, modifications to the building. So I guess I'm just wondering why they're not better utilizing the space over at the Old Carefree Village, instead of changing the, you know, stature and the look of such a, you know, traditional building and historical, in my mind, to our community.
As far as, as far as the aesthetics go, we really don't have any opportunity to tell them what they can or cannot do with the property. So in regards to the minor or major amendments, Jordan, if you want to...
Right, so in the ordinance, a major amendment typically includes increases to density, increases to building height, changes of uses. This is actually not changing the use, it's just expanding, so we determine that it's a minor.
The city attorney agreed with that as well?
Correct. And for the other question, I may have to defer. I don't know if one of the applicant's representatives is here, he may be able to speak better to
Hello, my name is Mark Naskey. I'm with Charles Vincent George Architects. And I think the answer, or at least the question about the look of the building and how, the nature of the White House, we are specifically took great... and how, the nature of the White House, we are specifically took great pains to kind of walk the building and measure it. And there are significant wood damage to the exterior of that building. And what we're interested in is kind of repairing that, the look of the building as it is, and that not to change it in any way. Certainly, there is an addition, and I've got a small walkway attachment to the existing building. But I kept the scale of the new addition in size to one story, so that it wouldn't interfere with the height of the existing building. And then I've also kind of created a kind of a recess next to the existing building, so that it, it really stands apart from the addition. We are using similar nature of siding and redoing the shutters and making them real shutters instead of the fake ones that are on there today. And so, you know, keeping mindful of the type of siding that's on the building and the trim work, and that we're not replacing really the gutters or, or shingles roof. It's really just kind of taking a real look at the siding of the building and insulating the wall. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it's, it's, you know, our intent not to really change the look of the existing building, but to try to reinforce what's really there and, and kind of come back with fixing a lot of the wood problems that exist on the building today.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Ask if any of the council members have...
Do any of the council members have anything to say?
Any announcements of, of a general nature?
Does anyone in the audience have anything they would like to share with the council? Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Alderman Kenny? Alderman Shower?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice job, Mr. Mayor.
So Joanne and Sam, did I miss the swearing-in part? Can I get a, can you guys pretend you're doing it again, so I can get a picture?
Yeah, we're going to take a picture.
Yeah, yeah, but I want, like, like when he swear, it being sworn in.